Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Pat.
Yes. Derek Vander.
Present.
Donnie Green.
Present.
John Hurd.
Present.
Brent Jordan.
Present.
Jeff Coe.
Present. Okay. Do you all please stand and join me in the plect of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation under God, founded on liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask for an approval to the agenda with the modifications to take items four, five, and six in our regular agenda and make them items one, two, and three, since we have our speakers here tonight. And then also on the consent agenda, items two M and two O, those are not ready, so we're going to delete those. So I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Thank you. Derek, thank you, John. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that motion passes. Thank you. All right. First up, celebrations. We have some celebrations tonight. Thank you. So first up, we've got busing Buster out. So the Joplin Schools Transportation Department held a ribbon cutting to recognize Fletcher Toyota and the Missouri Masonic Home and Fellowship Lodge 345 for the funds to purchase Buster, the talking school bus. Buster provides the district with an engaging way to teach bus safety. Dorothy Alzen's Community Development Coordinator at Joplin Schools obtained the sponsorships to fund Buster's purchase. So this was an activity to help those students new to the busing system get comfortable with the procedures. So that was an excellent activity, which is on the next page also. So the Joplin Schools Bus Camp, the Transportation Department recently held its second bus camp for area kindergartners and first grade students. The star of the event was Buster, the talking bus, a mobile education tool for events and safety trainings. Bus camp provided students and their families an opportunity to take a bus ride, participate in safety lessons, games, street crossing exercises, bus stop reminders, to meet Buster, the bus, and more. And it was a fun and engaging way to get students excited and ready to ride the bus this fall. So it's great to get them acclimated early. All right. Next up, our Regional Teacher of the Year, Julie Pagan, an amazing special ed teacher at Soaring Heights, was named Joplin Schools Teacher of the Year last spring. Ms. Pagan was recently selected the Regional Teacher of the Year by Committee of Peers and Key Stakeholders from the Southwest Center for Educational Excellence. The Regional Teacher of the Year program began in 2016 to celebrate outstanding teachers from all areas of the state. Semifinalists and finalists for the Teacher of the Year will be selected in August, prior to the 2022 Teacher of the Year being named in early September. So congratulations to our own Julie Pagan. Next up, All Area Academic Excellence Team. The Joplin Globe and Missouri Southern State University have partnered for 36 years in the area's academic recognition program that recognizes high school seniors and their most influential educators. Judging for the All Area Academic Team is based upon students' high school cumulative grade point average of seven semesters and ACT scores. Three Joplin High School students and their most influential educators were named to this impressive team. Olivia Spencer with Mr. Butts, Wyatt Satterley from Mr. De Graff, and General Lee Dunn, Mr. Cooney. Congratulations to those. Another partner of the community, celebrating our community support, local Casey's Convenience Stores are currently holding a school supply drive. Look in your neighborhood store for a collection box and join Casey's in making this a great year for our students. We want to thank Casey's for their support of our school district and supporting the schools and their communities. So thank you to Casey's. All right. Next, we've got Joplin Globe's 2022 Athletes of the Year. Always Right from Joplin Schools was Male Athlete of the Year. General Lee Dunn from Joplin Schools was a cross-country athlete of the year, and Donovan Fowler from Joplin Schools, of course, is a track and field athlete of the year. So congratulations to these athletes. And last but not least, Missouri Pioneer in Education Award. Dr. Ron Langford will be honored next week by his state education officials as one of six pioneers in education. The recognition will be held at the annual Cooperative Conference for School Administrators. The Commissioner of Education stated these individuals are true champions of public education striving for excellence and advocating for Missouri students throughout their careers as public servants. Dr. Ron Langford has had a long career in public education, serving the students of Missouri. Most recently, he served as Joplin Schools Assistant Superintendent for Business Services. So congratulations, Dr. Langford. All right. That's our celebrations for tonight. Next up, we've got our superintendent's data report.
Okay. First thing up is our construction update. We have Aaron here from Crossland.
Hello. There's a lot better in here than it does outside. Okay. You got a quick report for me? Okay. Well, I've got nothing but good news. Interior-wise, drywall is progressing in Area A. There was about 30 guys just working on drywall yesterday. So we are rocking and rolling. Painting is going on in Area B. First floor is pretty much painted out. Second floor just got started. So there's a lot of color getting started on the, on the Area B. Interior storefronts, rocking and rolling on that. Bathroom tile, we have started officially started the tile. So we've got a picture coming up here in a little bit of a bathroom tile. Millwork starts Thursday this week. So it's kind of a milestone for, for us whenever millwork gets started. That's kind of the light at the end of the tunnel. As far as exterior goes, brick masonry, we're about 80% complete. That has been a little slow. It's been hot. So those guys haven't been able to work as long and as hard as they normally do. So it's, it's moving a little slower, not affecting the critical path whatsoever. Quality looks very good. They are, they're taking precautionary measures in the heat to just slow down a little bit, make sure they do it right the first time and not have any mistakes. Playground area, the concrete as well as the fencing has begun. A lot of the perimeter fence where the backstop area is, that's all completed. That all gets a mow strip, so all that is completed as well. We're going to get started on the south area concrete. So between us and Murphy, all that concrete is very decorative back there. We're getting ready to get started on that next week. Curb and gutter crew, they're back next week as well to complete. So we've done all the curb and gutter around the perimeter road. We're going to do the interior parking lot now. So we'll finish that up. Also notable, exterior metal panels starts Thursday this week. So that's going to be pretty awesome. Go ahead and progress forward. Just some current photos. These were all taken yesterday of the brick masonry. Front entry, if you notice, if you can see from the photos, it's called green Z's have been installed. That is the first thing we have to do before the metal panels. What that does is it prevents thermal transfer into your building. Just some areas on the left is your roof line with the brick on top. On the right is your loading dock area. There's the backstop and the fence getting installed. Interior, so the big opening is in your commons area slash gym area. The photo on the right is your, I think it's a huge kitchen hood, but it's about 20 foot long, really massive stainless steel kitchen hood. I was, I was pretty impressed. Some color on the left, bathroom tile on the right. Media center. So all that is rocking and rolling pretty well. Media center on the right as well, just a lower level view. You have a couple circles that are through wall, so those have all been completed. And then a view down your hallway, and that is upstairs, Area B, getting ready to get painted. And that is it. Moving along, we need to break in the heat to finish up the outside, but otherwise the inside is moving along fabulous. Any questions for me?
Still pretty much on schedule.
Yeah, right on. Right now, I would say we're 80% complete overall, the project. Substantial completion, same as last time, November 4th. Final completion 1214. So that's turning over the keys. You guys have.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Do we have anything on the contingency that we wanted to share?
I think there is a contingency file.
Matt? We'll pull it up.
We do.
Yeah, I think the only change from last, last meeting was that we added, there was a change order number 13 that was approved during last month's meeting. So that, that was added on there, 6424, not much change. But anyway, we're just trying to get that, just to let everybody be aware of where we stand.
So what's the balance on the contingency?
A million four is still available.
Gotcha.
And the closer we get to completion?
Yeah. Really once we're out of the ground, the contingency goes down.
That's the goal, so.
All right. Worked on it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Nice progress.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Strategic focus. All right. Every month from now on, we're going to bring to the board and to the community something that's going on in the district, whether it be in a department, whether it be a grade level, whether it be in a classroom strategy or something that goes on, you name it, any part of the district. And there'll be obviously a heavy emphasis with academics each month throughout the year, something that's happening that's directly tied to the strategic plan that you adopted in May. Okay? So tonight, what we'd like to do is our Technology Department, our Learning Services Department, and our Communications Department, we have a short PowerPoint to talk to you just briefly and the community about the plans they put together that are reflective of the district's strategic plan and that the plans that we will renew annually. So they've spent a lot of time, Eric Pitcher and Matt Harding spent a lot of time with several folks that they enlisted for technology. Sarah and her team, as well as department chairs and different folks throughout the district have worked very hard on the curriculum assessment, professional development. And as you know, Sarah Coyne was hired recently, and she's been working a lot on the communications plan. There's a lot of things that are moving and shaking. So what they're going to do is going to give you some of the highlights of those plans that you're going to hopefully approve in the consent agenda a little bit later, and we'll let you go.
Let me jump in there real quick. So this is not the 50 pages of each of the three.
Right.
The 150, this is the top-level summary of the 150 pages that we had in the pre-read. So.
We started with 97 slides and we got down to four.
We narrowed this down extensively.
Thank you, Sarah.
But there's a lot more than this.
Yeah. That's very good. Okay.
Yeah, so I would just say, we're going to just give, the board has seen the drafts of these plans, but to give the public an idea also of kind of what we've been working on and going through. So Matt's got a slide to share for technology, Sarah will hit one for communications, and then I'll wrap up with curriculum.
Very good. So with technology, you know, for the policy, we need to periodically go through and look at, you know, where we're at with technology and then develop a plan as far as instructional resources, equipment, what we have. And so over the last six months of the year, Eric Pitcher, and he enlisted a lot of stakeholders and headed committee, put together, reached out to teachers and other stakeholders within the, within the district to find out, you know, where were we at technology-wise? And they were able to kind of boil it down to four technology-focused areas that are on the screen. So the first one is learner support, and that kind of boils down to, you know, the hardware, make sure that every kid, every teacher has a device in their hand. Are they able to utilize it? And can they move forward within the classroom? The second technology-focused area is instructional support. So that's kind of more of the software, you know? You know, if a teacher needs something in their classroom, does it coincide with the technology that the kids have and the teacher has? And is it functional, is it useful? And, and we're actually going to start moving forward, kind of sit down and have more discussions about what we're actually utilizing in the classroom, you know? What kind of money are we spending on the software, on those computers? And are the programs, because over the last 10 years, this is, this is a whole different world that we're living in, in, in the classroom as far as technology goes. So are there, are there software pieces that we're, we're paying for and using that we're not using to the best of our ability? Or we're not using well enough dollars? Can we get rid of those and look for other, other means? So, so that'll be on the technology-focused area two. Technology-focused area three is technical support, and that's really making sure that we have a really good infrastructure as far as the internet, you know, what's being put up in the cloud, you know, all those pieces that go in behind the scenes to make sure that all of our kids and our teachers have access to, to the, to the instruction in the classroom. And then technology-focused area four is the one that I think we're really excited about is, is increasing communication, not only within the school building, but within the community. You know, how can, how can we support parents with what their kids are using, you know, with their Chromebooks and what access from a safety standpoint? Can we help parents out with? And then with professional development, can we provide parents as far as that piece goes? So those are kind of the four focus areas. And like Jeff said, there's a whole lot of other pages to it where all the data is going to get plugged in. And so this will, this will be a living document. You know, this will change. I think, I foresee this something that we update every year with the board to kind of say where we're at and what we need to do moving forward as far as technology goes in the district.
Fantastic.
Very good. Very good.
Okay, communications. So in making this communications plan, I really had some good conversations with Mark Manus, our consultant, and, and with our leadership team and people around the district looking for what they're interested in, seeing what we need to highlight in communications plan, what still needs work. So these are just the top highlights that I came up with from the plan. Key message storytelling, I think one of the main goals of the plan will be able to get our story out to the community in a timely manner to share all the interesting and great things that are going on in this school district that sometimes get pushed under the rug. We have a lot of good things going on, and it will be not too hard to find and share those with the community. So that's a big goal. And there's a few focus areas in that key message storytelling. I want to talk about the uniqueness of our district offerings. We offer some really special paths for our students and for educators as well to, to find their, their purpose in life and some ways for them to really excel or to get out in the world. So we want to tell the stories about that. We want to talk about our excellent staff and our student leadership, and also get the message out about our attendance campaign that will be a big part coming up in the future. Next is the importance of employee and media relations. We're going to work on some training around helping our staff know when to talk to the media and how to talk to the media, maybe get them some tips to become more comfortable with it, and then also just some guidelines for what to do if you're approached for a story and how to go through the district to get that taken care of. School-related social media accounts is something that we've been bumping, bumping up against a lot recently. And so in order to get a handle on that, we put it in the communications plan to really dig deep into making a, a set of standards that all of our staff can, can look back to to know when they can create a social media account, what, how to use it, how to keep it updated, what are the, the guidelines as a district for keeping those kind of normed and managed in a way that allows us to keep up with state, state statute, which requires us to have records of all of the comments and posts on social media accounts. So in order to get that all under our umbrella, there's a couple of new processes that are going to be in place, and that's a big part of the plan. Standards for internal and external communications, this is a really important one because internal communications, it'll be a pickle of the plan is to make sure that our staff are some of the, they're the very first people who hear the things that they need to hear because they're going to be on the front line answering questions from our parents and from our students. So we want to make sure that they have the information they need when they need it. And then also, how are we going to communicate with our external stakeholders as well, making sure that they know how to get the information that they need, where to look for it, when to look for it, and if it's going to be in a text message or an email or if it's up on our website? We want to make sure that those standards are published easily for, for our stakeholders to find. And then the tools and methods that we're going to use, surveys are going to be a big part, as we've heard so much about, through Live Exchange and Survey Monkey, student staff and community members will be to take part in those surveys. Then we're also developing some key communicator contacts, some networks of people that we can go to, not only to share what's going on in the district, but also to get really important feedback about what they need from us. Something else is community focus groups we're working on with Dr. Secetta to make sure that we have a lot of, a lot of opportunities for the public to be invested in the schools and hear from us and to develop a trust and relationship. And then some, some listening sessions, admin team going to buildings and, and really governing those lines of communication with our staff and colleagues.
Okay. Founded most interesting, who the owner is of each of these social media accounts. I didn't know it was Eddie the Eagle, but that's who the owner is of each account, which makes perfect sense once you see it. That's how you know.
As far as the curriculum department goes, there are a lot of different pieces over time that have been in different places. So for example, a master assessment calendar is a document that we utilize, you know, particular processes for, if we want to add a new course, what we do for that. So this plan really, it's a little bit different in its usability from maybe what you would see with the tech and communication plan. This is going to be a document where teachers and principals really can go to to reference information they may need. It has a very thorough appendix with tons of links that will be the annual updates. We've tried to structure this in a way, things that change every year, like a master assessment calendar, where the dates are going to change, when our benchmark windows are, those are replaceable links in the appendix, whereas some of the statutory language is just requirements of what we have to have. So there are a lot of components in there. This for sure, we have worked on this, Chris and Libby and Eric and I have worked on this really all year, just trying to get our handle and wrap around with curriculum and instruction and assessment as well as PD. So this really just puts it into one place. But we definitely anticipate adjustments and then annual updates for the board, but little adjustments along the way as we kind of navigate that. Two of the big pieces, I would say for this coming school year that's referenced in this plan would be our review cycles, curriculum review cycles and feedback with our teachers of making sure that we're continually improving that, as well as our collaborative teams, which will feed into that revision as well, because we have to be able to look at our data and answer questions. Is it a strategy issue? Is it a resource issue? We've got to problem solve those. So that'll be a huge piece of a lot of the work happening with the curriculum department as far as teachers and collaborative teams. Dr. Secetta and I will also be replicating a lot of that with our principals. So we're going to have a huge instructional leadership focus this year with our principals. Whatever we're expecting teachers to do in a teacher team, we're going to be working. So we, we kick off with them next week on that, but those pieces will be developed right alongside our teacher collaboration.
Very good. And I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that the leadership team at Central Office is doing. We have a lot more work to do. We have a full day planned on Thursday to tie our, our plans together from the district so that, so that what, what you approved is able to be put with measurements and everything else that we've discussed, and then also for us to be able to sit down with the principals and make sure that everything's lined up as we march on through the school year. So I appreciate everybody's work on that.
Just one comment, if we go back onto the communication plan highlights. Pop that back up for a second. There's one. There's one.
There you go.
Yeah, so on the standards for internal and external communication, it seems like something's missing from the parents piece of it. It's, it's that parents will be made aware of the where and how district information we share consistently. It's like it's missing a few words.
Sure. Yeah. I have a plan to make, to put that information and share that information where those of the parents are made aware of.
Yeah, okay. That was, that's good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm curious, how will like the community or parents be able to access if they wanted to see these plans? Will they be on our website under?
I don't want to speak for you two, but as far, as far as curriculum, that, that will all be linked to the department, curriculum department on the website. And I would, I would assume for technology and communications as well. And with, as we get into improvement plans, buildings, departments, all of those types of plans, I believe, Dr. Secetta, correct me if I'm wrong, but those will be accessible.
Yes. Yeah, all the, all the improvement plans need to be accessible.
I think emphasis was on the things that do change. When you publish it, you're publishing it to, a link to the document as opposed to it, that way if you change the document, you don't have to go back and change the layout of the website or where it will go to the new document and, and having a standard format. I know, at least on the technology side, there's always been a question of do I look at Canvas or do I look at Power School? And when do the grades get updated? Because they don't quite match. And I think they did a big push saying, okay, well, Power School updates every night at midnight, and Canvas is as it happens. So if you see a difference, make sure you check after midnight. But that was a couple of years ago.
Well, I'd always say, if you want to see a grade, check Canvas.
Yeah.
That's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah. So, I mean, having, having those tools here to go, go to this one for this and this one for this. And I especially like cleaning up the things that maybe we're not using but are still in our portfolio. I, you know, I don't like Classroom Dojo. I don't know if we're still using Classroom Dojo or not, but you know, if that's something that's being paid for somewhere and it's outdated now because we've got something else, we've got to clean this up. So good effort. Thank you.
All right. All right.
Health and dental?
Okay. On the health and dental plan, we just ended the fiscal year and we spent 7.2 million, 74,651 dollars in our health and dental fund, which we had budgeted 7.4 million. So we did come a little bit under budget. It was a little higher than what we've been experiencing. And if you kind of compare last year to this year, we, this year we did have 58,000 more in revenue with the average of 10 additional participants in the healthcare plan, but we did have 413,641 additional in expenses this year. Jamie will be up to speak later on our health plan, so I won't go into much more details other than that unless there's any questions.
Looks good.
Okay, so.
Financial statements.
Moving on to the financial statements. Matt, if, when you get that up, if you would go to page four, the condensed financial statement. One thing I might mention is we did, our total investment now is 17 million, 500,000 in MOSIP, so we did continue to move some over. I do have a meeting, I've been talking with the MoCAT people, who were some that you, the ones that we just approved this last year, to invest with them as well. And so we're, you know, looking, probably moving some more over to them as well. They think, I think the Fed has moved, is meeting this week, so they're thinking that they will have a better option to go, to go forward with that. But on the condensed financial statement, we did, revenues came in a little more than we had projected. Some of that, the, some of the federal, and a lot of that is timing. You know, we didn't get some of our federal reimbursements yet, so some of that's coming in in, in July. And then on the expenditure side, some of the, we did come under budget there. A lot of that we knew in the Capital Projects Fund we would because of the, the bond issue. I did, I had the full amount budgeted. But the, on the incidental side, some of the, those items that were less than what we projected was, some of it was in salaries of our paras. We were, we were understaffed all year on paras and some of the other positions, and then, which affected the salaries and the benefit side of that. Also, some of our purchased services, LTE billing, this tuition paid to other schools was down a little over 200,000, and, and that again is, is a timing issue when they get those bills out. Travel was down. We still weren't going to a lot of different conferences. A lot of those were held virtually again this year. And then the, we had some, some of our utilities too, where some of that was down a little bit from what we had projected. Any other questions on the financials? We did end the year on liquidity with a little over 50% liquidity. So we knew we were going to be up there with all the SFR funds that have come in. We do have a projection to start spinning, you know, some of that out. We are projecting that to decline over this next year, so.
Any questions?
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Shelley. Okay, follow comments? Do we have any? No, none tonight? Okay. All right. So we're up to our consent agenda. There's a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent. I have those.
Okay. Motion by Derek, second by Brett. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, that passes. All right. Now for our regular agenda. Back to Shelley.
We admitted, we admitted.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We are at number four, which is now the new number one. Sorry about that. Yes.
The health plan, I'll ask Jamie to come forward and I'll ask Brett to come forward as well. I would add that if it pleases the board, we could take items, all three items at one time unless there's an issue of voting. If there was something that you would allow or whatever, we might have to vote separately. So for the, you know, for the essence of time, if you want to take all three together, we can. I'll turn it over to Jamie. She does a much better job of explaining insurance.
If, if. If they take a motion, you take all three together.
Okay. All right. Motion by Derek, second by John. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, that passed. Okay, we're going to do them all together.
Okay. I would allow, to let you know, we have an HPAK committee, which is stakeholder overall voice. Brett is our chair for that committee. And so this is his first time with HPAK presenting his work. And Jamie is of course our board group VP.
All right. Well, hi. Good to see everybody.
Hello.
So we're going to talk about a couple of things that we've already taken to the HPAK, had approved by the HPAK. Looked at several different options this year when looking at the health plan and the potential for making some changes. So we're going to talk about what was presented and approved by the HPAK, but a little bit of background before we roll into those suggestions. Just want to make sure everybody knows and understands that there have been absolutely no changes to the health plan in over four years. So four years ago in 2018, when we moved to UMR with United Healthcare, we did so improving the plan design and reducing the premiums for all of the employees within the district. And for four years, there have been absolutely no changes. So this year, as we start to look at it, as Shelley mentioned, the reserves are doing very well financially. So the health plan is still in a very good place financially, but each year those claims costs have been rising. So as our recommendation this year, met with the HPAK and said, we might want to consider some changes this year because while things are still performing relatively well, if we can make a small change, that can prevent a much larger change that may be required in the future. So I came in, met with them, presented several different options, a combination of different things, and what we decided on is what's presented here. Another thing that we did in those meetings is we looked at the benefits provided by Carl Junction, Carthage, Web City, and Neosho, and compared those to the Joplin School District benefits. The Joplin School District benefits are lower cost and better benefits across the board than every other district that we compared you to.
And I might add that that's part of something that's in the strategic plan, is what adopted is that we would look at benefit packages of surrounding schools to see how we can compete. So we're trying to comply with what you guys are working.
Okay. So that being said, what we want to do is, we do have a recommendation here for small plan design change and also a small change in the premium contribution strategy. So those are presented to, are given to you in the packets ahead of time, but I'll just discuss what we've done here. So just for your knowledge, there are three plans that are offered within the district. You have a health savings account plan, you have the base plan, which is a co-pay plan, and the buy-up plan. So on the health savings account plan, the recommendation is to take the deductible from 1,500 to 2,000. So raising that deductible by 500. The other districts locally do offer HSA plans and they average 6,000 as their deductible on the HSA. So just for comparison purposes there. So increasing that by 500 and increasing the out-of-pocket maximum by 500 to 5,500. So that's on the HSA plan. The next one is the base plan. Same thing here, taking the base plan, which would be the next slide. Thank you so much. Um, there we go. So taking that from 2,000 to 2,500 and the out-of-pocket maximum from 4,000 to 5,000. So again, a small increase there. Also, on this plan, we would raise the emergency room co-pay from 200 to 300 based on utilization and also on the availability of other services like the onsite clinics that are now available for employees and increasing the cost on specialty pharmacy from 100 maximum cost to 250. And then on the buy-up plan, which is the richest benefit that is offered, taking that from a 1,000 deductible to a 1,500 deductible and taking the out-of-pocket maximum from 3,000 to 4,000. So on the next page, what I did is I combined for you the potential savings. So we have actuaries that look at this and look at the claims cost and evaluate what the potential savings. So implementing these small changes on each of the three plans would result in about 943,000 in claim savings for next year. Okay, so it's a substantial impact with a very small change to the benefit design. And on the next slide, we just get into how many members would be impacted. So I listed on here how many met a 1,500 deductible, which was 40. 38 would meet a 2,000 deductible. Okay? So very, so when you look at that, of the 142 employees plus dependents that are on that plan, 38 would be impacted by a deductible of 500 more. Right? On the next plan, which is the base plan, this plan has the highest enrollment currently. There are 623 employees plus dependents on this plan. And on this plan, you would have 118 impacted by a 500 increase in their deductible. And again, that's based on last year's claims. And then on the buy-up plan, you have 151 employees plus dependents and 83 members would be impacted on this. That is a very low deductible. So having a 1,000, 1,500 deductible is very low. One MRI, you're meeting that deductible. And the individuals that are purchasing the buy-up plan are purchasing it because they know they're going to have that increased cost. They're going to have those claims. So they are going to be your higher utilizers. Are there any questions regarding the plan design changes before I move on to the premium side? Thanks.
The only one I have is on the prescription drug benefits.
Yes, sir.
Maxing from 100 to 250.
Yes.
I mean, that, I mean, how did you, how did you wind up with that kind of increase?
Sure.
Is that specialty lead? If that is a big change for them?
So on the specialty pharmacy, that's a good question. And so the specialty pharmacy is very unique because those are the medications that cost anywhere from 3,000 to 23,000 a month. Very expensive medications that typically also include manufacturer rebates. So what happens on those drugs is typically they're told this drug is 3,000. There's a co-pay card, you can get it for five. So then the member's not even seeing that cost, but then you can charge that cost back to the manufacturer. Okay? So that is part of the reason there, to change some of that cost, to shift some of the cost back to the manufacturers. But then also for those to be a little bit of steerage, because if someone walks into a pharmacy with a new prescription, it's something they've never taken before, and the pharmacist says, oh, this is a 250 medication, it can impact their decision-making on whether or not they're going to fill that medication. 250 max is the standard for a tier four specialty pharmacy. And so that's why we set it there versus the 100 where it is currently. Does that help with those questions? Are there any additional questions on that piece?
No, I mean, I understand the, the manufacturer rebate part of it, but that's only for some. There's a lot that that does not touch. And again, that's why I'm just questioning why we, we took that kind of a jump on, on that tier four. And I, when I get to peg game, everybody says, here's a standard, now here's a new standard, now here's a new standard, and they'll do that. But that seems like it's a large change for just one year, to take it up two and a half times.
Do you have a count of how many that would impact?
I don't have that count in front of me right now. I do know, we do have reporting that shows us how much specialty use, utilization is. And currently, right now, that's one of the biggest problems with your medical plan, is the specialty pharmacy utilization. There was a time when pharmacy was 20% of your medical claims. Now you're pushing 40. So that is a huge piece of your plan. And so that's why we look at some of that cost share. And again, it goes to their out-of-pocket maximum.
So that 100 may have been a 20% co-pay-ish at one time, and now it's.
So if they're paying 100, it's going towards that 4,000 out-of-pocket maximum or 5,000, and now that 250 would be going towards that out-of-pocket maximum. And so once they reach that out-of-pocket maximum, they don't have any costs in the remainder of the year. But that is why we wanted to do something to control the utilization and the prevalence of those new prescriptions to market.
Yeah, and your other comment of whether they get it filled or maybe they go back to their documents and say, hey, is there an alternative?
Correct.
You're trying to stimulate conversation around that.
Correct.
Gotcha.
That is a big thing, and that's part of why when we talk about the premiums, we're going to talk more on the HSAs. And that has been a big push of trying to get people towards more of those consumer-driven plans where they ask questions, they have conversations with their physicians, rather than, okay, I'll just go take this medication because it will fix things. So we really want, I, I look at things as we want to try to impact member behavior and get them to have more of those conversations and look at the medications that they are taking and what alternatives or lifestyle changes could possibly impact their need for that medication. You're welcome. Questions? Okay. So the next section that we're going to talk about is the premium contribution strategy. So on the next slide, you'll see the current enrollment. Ooh, it's really tiny, but I know each of you guys got this. The current enrollment and the premiums, again, these have not changed in over four years. This results in a contribution to the plan of about 6 million a year. So that's how much money is going into the healthcare fund. So we wanted to increase that a little bit. So on the next page, you'll see the HPAK recommendation. Again, I gave them several different recommendations. This recommendation would result in income to the plan of 6.3 million. So we would have about 943,000 in claim savings and additional 3 million, or 300,000 in premium contributions into the plan to kind of offset those increased claims cost. What we found though, when we started looking at this, we looked at how much was the employee cost? What was the employee cost going to go up? And making small increases of about 5. And the HPAK, and Brett could speak to that if you guys want to ask him about it, they were in agreement that, hey, 5, that's okay. That's a small amount. We're getting good raises and things like that. We did, however, we have some new members on the HPAK. And we had one that's a para who said, wait, I don't even pay 65 right now. I can't afford that. So it changed the strategy in the way that we looked at things. So what we did, working with the committee, was restructure the way that we, we broke out the contribution, so you're still getting 410 from the district for each employee. But we decreased the cost for the HSA plan. And we did that to try to drive participation and to offer a solution for those employees who are just completely not taking coverage right now and going uninsured. So that changed the employee cost to 35 a month on the HSA plan, where it was previously 65. So if employees choose to stay on the base or buy up, there is a small increase. And there's a column there that you guys have requested that shows monthly and annually what that increase is to the employee. But then there's a decrease if they chose to go on the HSA plan. They also get a 30 contribution to their health savings account from the district each month in that plan. So when we looked at this, the cost to the district would be 144,000. How much more the district would pay in premium contributions to get to this funding level? Brett, did you want to add anything on that or any feedback from the members?
Well, I think, I was, I was really happy with the committee because we have a number of veteran teachers, we have newer employees, we have employees that are on the buy-up plan, we have employees that are just insured by themselves, and then some are paying for family. So we had a, a wide representation of people that are affected by these changes. And every single one of them agreed that they, they liked the idea of small incremental changes now instead of trying to put off something larger in the future, so.
I like, this is not a one-size-fits-all. Everybody gets a 20% increase or 10% increase. This is targeted to those that need the most help, get the most help.
Yeah.
I would add too that I've been back and speaking, because he was on the committee for a long time as a principal, proceeding by, of going with the district in my current role. And what I would say is that Jamie's done a great job of informing the HPAK committee. They're very informed users of our insurance, and we're not all of our employees at all. And so I think that's key in that these folks have been through this process, start to finish till now. And they understand that it's highly unusual for any business or school not to raise insurance rates annually. And that there are people that have worked in this district for four years that understand that these don't rate, that we haven't raised. And so I thought it was very complimentary of them to realize the board's work and us working to raise salaries, because that was very apparent to them, that some of them said it was the best rates they'd had of their career. And that if ever there was a time to make small changes to raise rates, it was now. And, and two, that there needs to be some part of this education piece that, that rates do raise, right? And so that, that if we can make small changes now, because it's my understanding in 2018 when you came in, prior to that, there was a huge increase there to make the plan solve.
Yes, prior to them hiring me, the 2017 plan year, they had two increases that year. Two in one year.
So there's employees that still just recall that. And so minor changes to both plan design and premium increases is what we'd like to do to maintain our reserves rather than to go back to situations that we have to do large increases in a time. And I would say that I'm happy about the work that the committee's done, as well as Jamie, to try to find affordable insurance for some of those that aren't on plan, that, that are in situations that could, could be hurt or, or have life situations, that I would hope that we could have affordable insurance at all of our employees. So I think we'll try to work towards that way. And that helps us both retain, recruit teachers and stuff.
Because the, there was, if there was one area where Joplin Schools was below some of the other districts, is some of the other districts have a zero premium option. There isn't a zero premium free option at Joplin School District. However, the zero premium option is a 6,000 deductible. And I don't think that the committee, it didn't seem, would really have an appetite to let's do a 6,000 deductible option to get to a 0 premium. But we were able with these changes to get to a 35 a month, which may get more on the plan. And that one para in particular said, I could do that, whereas I couldn't do the 65 or 70.
I felt like her phone, Phil Pierce's phone as well.
Yeah.
And that was the one area of what we wanted as competitive was the HSA.
Yep. Well, just on the premium cost, not the deductible piece. So then you kind of got to balance that out as well. Yeah.
And not necessarily to give Sarah more work, but the, the.
Communication.
Communication plan of it. It is exactly what, what you need to explain to those people that maybe haven't experienced it in a few years, maybe forgot, oh yeah, we used to get it every year, or even twice a year, or those that are new to the market that haven't, first time they've had their insurance because now they're 28 and teaching and now they're off their, yeah.
All right. And then the only additional item that I had in here is just there's a variable cost savings program on prescriptions. It does not impact members. It's just taking advantage on those specialty drugs to put more on the manufacturers with those co-pay cards. So in six months, just looking at a six-month evaluation, putting this program in place would be a savings of 43,000 to the district. So that's 86,000. It tells you how much your specialty prescription spend is. So that's 86,000 in projected savings for the year. And there is a cost of 20 cents per prescription for that, but that comes up to 1,500 a year. So to be able to save the plan about 86,000 by, again, pushing more cost onto the manufacturers where it can be. So in summary, you know, there's been no plan design changes in four years. District benefits and rates are better than the surrounding school districts. We do recommend a small change in the plan design and a small change in premiums to result in about 1.2 to 1.3 million more in the trust next year. in about 1.2 to 1.3 million more in the trust next year. All right. So you want me to then roll into the EAP as well and vote all as one?
Yeah.
Okay. So the other thing, and we're not going to go through all of the slides in the EAP. I think you guys were given the information in the board packet, and it may be best just to kind of cover the highlights. So if you're not familiar, an employee assistance program is a program, well, first I'll back up. Several years ago, back in 2018, Joplin School District offered absolutely no mental health benefits for the employees. It was not part of the medical plan at all. So in 2018, that was a big move of the H-PAC to make sure mental health was covered. It is covered in compliance with mental health parity regulations. There are several other districts locally that do not cover mental health, but it's critical for Joplin Schools. So the next step has been to look at an employee assistance program. The employee assistance program is for every employee. It is not just for those who are enrolled in the health plan. It is for all full-time and part-time employees. They would be given a card with a phone number. They can call their spouses, their children, if they have elder parents who live in the home with them. They can call that phone number and utilize the EAP. The EAP allows 24/7, 365 days a year access to emergency assistance. So if you're having a bad day, you need to call and talk to somebody. They have licensed professionals with their master's degrees that answer the phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If you want an onsite or a telephonic consultation, they can get those scheduled typically within five days. Because it is with UMR, they're in network providers. So you get six free visits per issue, okay? So if I call in because I'm having a depression issue, I'm not doing well, I can have six visits. If then it's impacting my marriage with Brett, then I can call in because my marriage is struggling, and I can have six visits because of my marriage. If then there's financial issues, I can call in and have six visits because of financial, okay? So, and that's per family member. It has an app that is utilized with it that is included for every member to be able to access the app so they can research and do things on the app. They can request assistance, they can get some stress management, some financial management, some legal assistance through the app. So there's a lot of features available there. And like I said, it's six visits is what we decided on, and that was the proposal. And then the other thing that we wanted to add in, there's a section, it's called work-life services. So if he gets to that slide, it's an add-on feature that we feel is really important to have. And that's where a member can self-identify, or Brett could call and say, hey, one of the teachers at my school is pregnant. She needs these work-life services. So the work-life services send them a little kit in the mail, like a, hey, you're going to be a new parent kit. Has some neat things that they would need as a new parent. Or if you are now taking care of an elder parent and you need help with elder care placement, they're going to assist you with that. If you're purchasing a new home for the first time, they're going to assist you with that. So these major life events, so not just when you're in crisis, but when you're going through a major life event that you just need somebody to talk to to kind of help you through it. So you have those work-life solutions as well and those kits that help them with that as well. The other piece that UMR included that I think is critical and unfortunate, we have to discuss in this day and age, but it's a crisis response team. So if there were to be an incident at a school, if there were to be something that happened within the community, you have the crisis response team that they can set up and people can call in specifically to that crisis response team that is made to handle their specific crisis. The counselors that they call have been briefed, hey, this happened at Joplin Schools, and it's a special dedicated number to call in.
Is that still a limit of six?
No. That is, that would be like a 24-hour response line that would be set up immediately following a situation that occurred.
So I do want to add too that this is in response to also the strategic plan that through our surveys and for what our managers and what our work has done with them have showed that the district has challenged HR with trying to find alternatives and means to address mental health, both for our staff and for our students. And so this was H-PAC's work towards trying to find alternatives that we could assess for our employees and meet this strategic plan.
And we did, just so you guys are aware, I did an RFP and collected other EAP options as well. So I presented that to the H-PAC. We looked at other companies that do EAPs and compared them. Optum with UMR had the best pricing, and then it's consolidated with the Health. All total, the total cost, looking at the total number of employees at the district, the annual cost is around $26,000. The H-PAC felt that that was a good investment because it can be paid out of plan assets as an administrative fee. And with just the prescription savings alone, we're looking at $86,000 in savings. So it was something that was going to more than cover the cost of this program that then would impact every employee of the district.
So the administration would ask the board to accept these plan changes and increase and addition of the EAP as presented in the action items in the chat.
Justin, one quick question on the EAP portion.
Yes.
It references the $22,000 without the work-life.
Yes.
And then the $26,000 with.
Yes.
So we need to make sure in our motion that we include which one of those two were selected.
Correct. So we separated those out of the base, we wanted to pull that out separately. So it is the $22,528 annually. So the way it's written is it's the $26,731 annual total. But if the board would want to pull out to work-life services, that's why we listed that separately.
Okay.
As the $4,000.
So my motion would include the with.
Yes. Motion by Derek.
Second.
Second by Donnie. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Now that passed. Thank you. Thank you for the work, the hard work. Send our appreciation back to the H-PAC committee for the time and effort and the inclusiveness of bringing everybody into it to try and represent every aspect of our employees. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shelley, let's spend some money.
Okay. Accounts payable, bring the bill list tonight, the total of $8,649,354.25. Some of the big differences between last year at this time, it was $12,374. There were two, last year, there were two monthly payrolls just because of the date. And this time, there was really just the summer school payroll. There wasn't even a full monthly payroll in that, so.
Next motion is to pay our bills as presented.
All right. Motion by Derek, second by John. Discussion. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. That passes. All right. Replacement, artificial turf.
Oh, yes. I have Coach Hyke up here. Good thing about field turf is these hot days, we're not spending a dime on water or fertilizer, but.
Neither am I.
Exactly. Problem is, it's just like high-traffic carpet. After so long, it kind of wears down and becomes unsafe, and so it's time to replace it. So I have our resident turf expert, Coach Hyke, here to explain the process we've gotten to to get to this point today.
Yeah. So as it says in the action item, we have just completed year eight on all of our turf softball fields at Joplin High School, or turf fields at Joplin High School. After next softball season, that will be nine seasons. You know, your average life of turf is somewhere between eight to 12 years. For those of you that were on the board at the time, if you remember, we got 12 years out of the turf at Junk Field that we recently replaced. So we have our fields evaluated every year by independent G-Max services, Midwest G-Max. And so, you know, they've kind of been tracking that and maintaining that, measuring the hardness of our field, the fiber height, the level of infill, and those types of things. And so upon their recommendation, you know, it's time for us to get started on replacing those four fields. And according to his analysis, the softball field should be the first one that we replace, and then look to do another field the next three years until all four fields at Joplin High School are replaced.
Question added. I mean, and this comes down to a math equation. It costs us basically $40,000 a year, which is what the turf is costing us. Could we actually just put grass in and do it cheaper than $40,000 a year?
I don't know, John. I can't answer that question as far as what it would cost with, you know, your services to mow it, fertilize it, prepare it for games, and that type of thing. I don't have the math in front of me to accurately answer that question. I will tell you that the biggest benefit to having artificial turf is that, you know, it can rain 10 inches that day. And, you know, as long as it's not raining at 4:30, we're going to be able to play. And so, you know, that's been a huge benefit. And to be honest, I don't know, as an athletic director, if I could go back to the other way, we've been so spoiled of having to worry about, you know, shoot, are we going to be able to get that thing ready for a game tonight? And so.
When you think about it, fellow, if we're talking about $400,000 and you're considering four fields, we're really having a $1.6 billion conversation. And so it would seem to me, this is one person's opinion, I would table this thing, having to go back and do the math and say, hey, look, 1.6 billion divided by nine years, that's the spend I have to maintain four fields with grass. Would it be more appropriate to go back that way?
Sure.
On the long term versus the artificial turf? I don't know. I don't have the math.
Yeah, I don't have the math in front of me either, so.
It seems that we're going to make a decision for that kind of money, we should probably have all the facts all the way around the corner together on this one. Be my thought, just again, one person's thought.
And I kind of agree because then the next thing that I don't know is what would it cost to bring in the nerve and everything to make those fields grass?
Well, I could, excuse me, I could tell you back in 2007, when we put the turf in at Junk, I don't have the figures with me, but it was extremely close on the cost, the annual cost that we had at Junk for the football turf as it was for the upkeep and maintenance of it. Plus, it didn't take in consideration all the events that we were able to have and guarantee that we could have because of the rain and other things. So at that time, John, we did do that. And then we, as far as football was concerned, back in 2007, it was, to us, it was very minimal in terms of the cost. We did not do an analysis with softball.
Type X product, right?
Yeah.
The foam is at a sky high. So my second thought would be, well, if we're at sky high now, this is a petroleum-based product, would it be worth pushing it off? I have the same conversation with roughs, and I'm pushing them off until I get the price back down to what's normal. So we're kind of at a sky-high price point here also, which, again, if you do the math, because it's so high right now, maybe it pushes it back the other way.
How's the timing for this? I mean, this is the softball field, is that right?
Yes. You know, the timing is of critical concern because, you know, if we're going to do one field a year, so we're going to do one after year nine, one after year 10, one after year 11, one after year 12. We know from experience that by the time we get to year 12, you know, who knows what condition that last field that we do may be in.
But it doesn't mean we can do two in one year also, then.
Correct.
Right?
Which is probably what we're going to bring to you next year.
It is possible that as we get down the road, that we may have to ask for that, depending on the condition of the fields. You know, what we have planned on is baseball next, and then, you know, softball, or sorry, soccer and football, you know, they're all G-maxing around the same level and a very safe level. And so, you know, we were thinking do those, you know, the last two, those would be done.
Now, is there a safety and health issue for the athletes on now the turf versus the grass?
There is. I mean, there's obviously a difference, but to be honest with you, you can find studies that kind of go either way, that, you know, I think the biggest thing with the turf field is that you have to maintain it properly. You know, the biggest issue that you could run into with the turf field is they can become harder as far as concussions and that type of thing than a natural grass surface. I've seen studies that, you know, some of them say, yeah, you're more susceptible to a knee injury on an artificial turf field. Some of them say you're not. I do think the advances in artificial turf, the way the fibers are constructed, technologies such as the pad that we have under the field at Junk to make it softer, have greatly, you know, lessen any gap that there might be between the two surfaces as far as athlete safety.
Because that goes a long way, too, in regards to cost, is how much we're protecting our athletes by spending a little bit more. Yeah, but as Matt said, he's right, it's a 50/50. There's arguments wrong on both sides of that one. So I don't have an opinion on that because it is strong both ways.
And I think there's intangibles as far as maintaining a field and doing it right and making sure it's done right to keep it safe. Manpower that takes to do that. I'm speaking from somebody that took care of a baseball field and moved hoses and pipes at Junk Stadium to try to keep it green during the summer. You know, so you're talking about having coaches do it, skill craft do it. So there's people that could be doing other things in the district, but they're being forced to go take care of a field. And you're talking about a week like the last two weeks we've had, I can imagine how much we're putting in just to try to keep it green, much less keep it in shape to be playable when the season starts. And I think other area schools that have grass fields, if we get a big rain, no one else is touching that field except for the varsity football team. But right now, what, six days a week, there's somebody on Junk Stadium? And four days, three, four days a week, there's somebody at the high school. So I think usability of the fields, you know, we're getting a lot more usability just because as long as it's not down for right then, we have kids on the field, and it's accessible.
I would say the vast, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, the vast majority of class three, four, five, and six schools in the state of Missouri have turf fields in every athletic competition. Do you know, conference-wise, is it 100% or is it?
In softball?
In any sport, for that matter, but.
Well, other than Willard, every school in the conference has some sort of turf facility. Willard is still all grass. You know, they recently spent a sizable amount to re-crown their football field and resaw it and update their sprinkling system and that type of thing. To Matt's point, you know, I think one thing to consider as far as our fields at the high school is the manpower it would take. Because you got to understand in the fall, it's not just one field we're trying to get ready on any given night. It could be a football field, a softball field, a soccer field, you know, something in the gym as well. And so, you know, right now, we're at a luxury where you're really during the day, we have one custodian that kind of is assigned to athletics and gets our fields ready along with our coaches and that type of thing. I think it would probably have to be more manpower, John. If we went back to grass, we'd have to look at that because it could potentially be three fields as well as a gymnasium that we're trying to get ready on every, any given night in the fall.
Sure. So maybe if you just, you have a logistics conversation there, we can talk about that. But again, I think if we're going to be fiscally responsible, it would be appropriate if we're entertaining spending about 1.6 million, for you to come before the board and say, look, if we did it ourselves and it was grass, it would cost us this annually versus this spending capital for turf.
John, I.
Does that handle the whole conversation? I don't know.
I think we've had those conversations, and that's how we got to where we are now. It was a cost-saving, not only for safety and other reasons, but it was a cost-saving measure. And I know I'm just one person, but I think it would be a huge black eye to our district if we removed these artificial playing surfaces. We're in competition with area schools for our coaches. We're in competition with our, for our athletes. And one of the, one of the guiding lights that sends people to Joplin is our facilities. And we have some of the best facilities in the area, if not the best. And I would hate to see an effort to, you know, to distract from that or.
I'm not saying we do that. All I'm saying is to be fiscally responsible to the board, what we did in 2009 is not 2022. Just update the numbers, update the math, put it in front of the board. And if it tilts and says, hey, do the turf from all four, if it's post, I mean, we have discussion. At least we're informed.
I can, to your point, whether it's turf or whether it's replacing nine roofs that are all going to be due at the same time, you want to see the math, the numbers, to make sure that we're being responsible, just not going with the gun. And it's not that you're against turf or for grass or any, you just lay it out, and if you take a month, I mean, Matt, you're not doing anything this summer.
I don't think.
There's no kids around. But to find out what it is, what would it cost to have the manpower? Because, you know, we're probably 50% more than we were in 2009 cost-wise, if you can find the right people that can do that. But having those, and then you can put intangibles, too, like playability and, you know, rain.
It's an informed discussion.
I think so. And it also then helps us say, okay, we've made a decision that's based on some data other than just the price. We can afford it. It's in our bank account, but just because we can afford it doesn't make it the right decision. So.
We need to make a motion to take that aside until the next board meeting?
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the recommendation as presented.
I'd second that.
Now, you, you can.
There's a motion and a second. Now, discussion?
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second now, discussion? So my question would be, how long are these quotes valid?
Say that again.
How long are the quotes valid?
I'm not sure. I would have to go back and ask. I don't remember specifically when, if it listed a date on a quote.
I see the first two say that you can't.
I have a concern if we table this, we're going to be paying more a month later or somewhere down the road. I have a concern about that.
Maybe you'd be less curious.
I, yeah, but we're not hearing that from the vendors. I mean, we're just not hearing that.
Matt, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the base bid, it's 52 ounces. So that's the thickness?
That is the weight per square foot of the turf that has been specced.
I didn't know if they were specing something that is a better turf that is a lower lasting.
It is. Everybody has a different opinion on turf. Or from what we've learned, you know, that ounce weight is hugely important to the life of that turf. And so you can see here the base bid from American, Mid-America Sports Construction that we are requesting to accept has 52 ounces in the outfield, 52 ounces in the infield and a 90-ounce turf, which is about as heavy as you can get with the thatch zone in your high wear areas, your batter's boxes, your pitching rubber area, which are your biggest problems on a softball field.
Is there, it may be something to think about. Is there a way that those areas can be replaced without having to deal with the entire turf?
There are. We've had our turf contractor back two or three times in the life of that softball field to cut those areas out and replace that, you know, which is an expense. It's no longer free. And, you know, the other thing I would say about the way we bid this out is now those will be Velcroed in where you get eight replacement panels for each one of those sections. Our custodial people would be able to change out those panels ourselves and not have to have the expense of bringing our contractor back in to do it. So that would be a huge upgrade as far as our ability to maintain our own fields moving forward.
And also be able to purchase more if needed.
Sure, yeah. Those can be cut, sent to us if we need them. You know, for instance, we were on, Neosho has the same type of turf on their baseball field, which is two years old. Because it's such a heavier weight, they haven't had to change out those panels yet. So we believe that eight of each should get us through the life of the turf. If it doesn't, then we can always have those cut and sent to us.
All right. There's a motion and a second.
Let me ask a point order question. It says Derek said motion to table and I said.
No, I'm just asking.
You were just asking.
Just asking, yeah.
And then Brent said, hey, make a motion. Okay, so then we're.
So there wasn't a, okay.
Okay, okay.
So there's, there's a motion in play at the moment. Primary motion by Brent, second by Donnie. All right, please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. So that motion passes.
Does not pass.
Three to two. It's not spending, it's not paying a bill. It's not issuing a warrant. It's not one of the four P's. I did not bring my bag in.
It didn't pass.
It passed. Three to two.
It's three to two. You voted no.
I voted no. Three to two.
I think we still have ten four votes, but not.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we, we know that?
Yeah.
It's my understanding.
No, my understanding is.
It's a majority of the, who's here, you mean?
That there's only four specific cases that you need a majority of the whole.
Of the whole.
To close employ someone.
Close superintendent.
To pay a bill, to issue a warrant and to make a contract.
Isn't this a contract?
Is this a contract?
Yep. Well, it's purchase. It's purchase agreement.
Okay, so then here's what I will propose.
So from what I'm hearing is, Matt, if you would come back with some more work on this, I suppose. Maybe present something that you presented even.
We'll put those numbers together.
Can I say something about the dirt?
Hang on a second. Let me, let me add this into it. We're going to meet Monday or Tuesday as a board.
Okay.
So today is Tuesday, five days. It could pass in five days if that's enough time to put it together. So I don't think we'll lose the quote period, but we'll have that data because it's going to be the basis for the next three years.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to do turf and then grass, grass, turf. So it's not like this isn't at some point going to move ahead and that five days is going to keep us from making that deadline.
Well, I think we need to be real clear with Matt, what he's bringing back, because I heard two things. I heard, are we going to do grass or are we natural grass? Are we going to do artificial grass and have a comparison? Because I agree with Brent. We, that ship sailed a long time ago and we decided to go to artificial grass with all our fields. Because if we went back to natural grass, you know, that is a major expense to come in and start with natural grass the same way it is if you start with turf from natural grass. Or the other thing was saving money. You know, the idea of concept of saving money. So I think if we come back on Monday, Tuesday or whenever, if we decide to have a special board meeting, that we need to be on both of those regards. We need to come back with information, both of those, because.
On the grass.
Well, because, you know, I, to Brent's, yeah, one-time cost. Because to Brent's point, I mean, we have decided this is, this is the kind of facilities that we wanted. That was decided a long time ago. And when you do that, you're either going to continue to go down that road and replace them hopefully later rather than sooner. I would like to have our, the turf that we get this time to go 12 years. And that's what I think we tried to do to go with the heavier pile height and everything that was from what was purchased the first time so that we can push that out.
Anybody arguing that, all we're asking is update today's numbers. If you wanted to flip it back to grass, it would cost X.
Yeah.
And then my annual upkeep for four fields would be Y. Put the two together, this is my cost.
Yeah.
And I think that probably answers the question going forward. But I think it also means that the board did their traditional responsibility and question that it looked at. That's all. I don't, I'm not agreeing with anybody saying, I don't think we should do this. Let's just be completely informed on this.
Well, do we want to be informed too on price reductions down the road? Was my question, my last question. I mean, because I'm not sure that we're going to see anything from the vendors. I mean, we can ask, but of course, they don't know. They can tell you a lot of things.
The question to ask them is, as the price of petroleum, how does this move with your product? Because that is a big component. They just know that. They couldn't say, here's a peg on the wall that's where I think they'll be. But they can give you direction that, hey, here's how this thing slides and moves. So again, just another data point for discussion.
Okay. You feel like you got what you need?
We'll put it together.
And I'll come back with some clarity and it's one of the four. So if we're signing a contract, that is one of the four things that you need.
And we would be signing a contract on this, in this regard. Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
One, Matt, when you look, I know when you go, something should be figured in on the grass fields and the time that it takes and the maintenance. It would manpower get those fields to be usable.
Sure.
Because I know. Kuzma, we're supporting putting in new builds and Springfield and it's taking quite a while to get those fields to be used.
Sure. It's a process to get it grown in and the way it needs to be. Okay. We will put it together.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, next up, proposal to approve funds of purchase of one service truck.
Yes, I have Justin come up here. In September, we had a truck that was damaged in an accident. And so, Justin Henry has been working very hard to find a replacement for that truck.
I have 28 pages for one truck, so thanks for.
I did my research, I promise you. Well, so.
What age was the truck that was totaled?
2006 and yes, it was totaled. Yeah. If you look on there, we got $22,661 for reimbursement for the previous truck that we had. The truck that I found with the lowest quote was $66,463. This is for a one-ton duly with a utility bed on the back. That is what we had. We use it for four-wheel drive to pull out buses from snow.